Okay, guys. So we'll call to order the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting of the East Bethel, Minnesota City Council. If you all could join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Motion's made. Motion's made and seconded by Mr. Miller. Any discussion needed?
Yeah, we need to add two things.
That's Mr. DeRoche speaking.
Need to add, because we, we need to add tabling the relief funding.
Oh, we do that when we get to the consent.
Yeah, I'll pull that and we can deal with it.
That one and create a H. All right, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll pull that. What was the other?
Um, the security systems. We're gonna vote on doing the security system, but we're in a work session.
Were, were we ready to vote on that?
We, we didn't have a write-up for that. We can, it's up to you if you want us to bring that back or table it.
Well, yeah, we need, we need the final put together, yeah.
We'll get that in the next meeting.
We just like how you make proposals, Nate, that's all.
Well, we got a problem with their recycling center. I don't know if people remember, but they shut down that tank where you dump disposable oil. Remember that? No, you weren't here, were you?
Yeah, I was.
They were following PCVs in there. People were not doing what they should, so we went quite a while without that tank. And that's one that's not covered by the camera anymore, huh?
Okay, so we've got a motion made and seconded. Do we need to do anything? If not, all those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard, therefore the motion passed. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is presentations in public hearings, delinquent utility public hearing, and resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-four. Are you taking that for us, Nate?
I can, Matt, I can take it, yeah. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we're just calling for a public hearing on this. Back on the last council meeting, we set November thirteenth as a public hearing date for individuals wishing to object to the delinquent charges being collected through the assessment process. We had provided this information for you. These are the remaining addresses of delinquent accounts. And just to go through this, this is the utility amount due. There's a seventy-dollar charge that the county charges us to actually place it on the property taxes.
Oh, wow, in addition to the interest, huh?
Yep, they don't do it for free. And the interest is eighteen percent, but that's over twelve months, so it's one point five percent a month. This is the interest amount added up, and this is the total. These individuals have been sent letters saying this is outstanding. Some of them like to have it placed on their taxes. I don't quite understand that myself, but at any rate, um, this is, quite honestly, the end of the road in terms of how we can collect this money. And, um, and as you can-
Were we supposed to have someone here tonight? I thought, I thought the, the note said that there was one party who was gonna come and-
Well, tha- that's why after, after this, you'll call for a public hearing. Someone, if there's someone here that wants to speak to it, they can. There's no one, then you close it.
So it'll be a surprise. We'll find out.
Maybe a surprise.
Looks like the number's gone down from the first time we had this in the packet.
Yes, yep. So there are people that wants to get the notices, they pay. These are the remaining individuals.
Good eye, Bob.
There was a question as to why, um, you know, a large number was coming from Whispering Aspens residential customers. That's where a large number of our users are, quite, you know, um, and the Preserve, so. So that's where, that's where our customers are. That's why it shows up there. The rest of the community doesn't have, aren't hooked up to this, so. Isn't singling them out or anything like that.
Does any of this ever go into litigation? Or is it just kinda sit there until they sell the place and then it's tacked on, or?
This would go on their annual property taxes, so if they don't pay their property taxes, then there's that process of tax forfeiture and all that that, you know, isn't very pretty either, so. Um, but the total is twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. Mr. Mayor, and if you'd like to call for a public hearing, we can go there.
Well, we'll open the public hearing on this matter. Anybody who'd like to speak to it, please step forward. Going, going, gone. Close the public hearing on this matter, and then we have a resolution, resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-four, which is to forward this information to the county.
Resolution twenty twenty-four seventy-four, Mr. Mayor, is the final certification for delinquent utility charges for collection with twenty twenty-five property taxes.
Um, I move to move the resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-four certification of delinquent charges.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. DeRoche and seconded by Mr. Miller. Is there any discussion of the matter?
I'm just curious, Matt, like the Greystone Trailer Park, is that part of this, or no?
Uh, Greystone has, they charge their own residents for, um, for sewer. So we bill them one lump sum. They figure out how to distribute that amongst their customers.
So that's strictly, most of those are Whispering Aspens?
So if they don't, if they don't collect, they must have a process for, for collection.
Thank you, that's it.
Yep. Any further discussion? Okay, we got a motion made and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. The motion carries. That takes us to the public forum. Do we have anybody on our public forum signup sheet over there? Ms. Gimple. How are you today, Tammy? Good.
Tammy Gimple, two-two-three-five-nine, Baton Street, East Bethel, Mayor Council, City Administrator. Uh, first, I'd like to say, I know we got off to a bad start. Yeah, City Administrator and I from January, February, whatever of this year, so. I'm sure there's area of, that's kind of a area of contention. I'm, I'm wondering when you guys did up a, I wrote notes and then I forgot my notes, so. When, um, you file a complaint and it goes to City Administrator, correct? If you file a complaint with the city?
You mean if, if a resident files a complaint?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Where does it go? It goes to, does it go to Kerry, City Administrator? Does it go to? It used to go to Jack, so I assume it, when it goes to the City Administrator.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, the Community Development Department handles the complaints. They're filed there and then followed up on for whatever the complaint may be based on.
Okay, so the complaint I, excuse me, filed, I know I sent it to City Administrator, all of you, and this was on the Act of nine-one-one that was posted. That was a private, private app, posted out on public. And I believe you guys even just did policies on, because of that, you're doing, you're making policies now.
Yeah, we actually didn't get to it in the working meeting, but it was, it was on our agenda.
Right.
It's, uh, safety and security, and, yeah.
And that's, I'm not sure.
Yeah, you're right. You're right about that.
The end part of that, and that's, that's great. That's what should happen.
Yeah.
Um, I'm still wondering where that is with the Act of nine-one-one. If that is, if it's gonna be investigated, if I'm being heard, if it's just gonna be pushed under the rug, where, where that is going, where it is, and where it's, I guess, I'm wondering where it is. I would prefer to, I worked well with Jack, and I prefer to send my stuff and get it figured out and not come here. I don't wanna come here. But if I'm not being heard, I feel like I'm gonna have to come here. And so, and that's why I'm here.
Mr. Mayor.
It's not for the pleasure of our company, Tammy. Yeah, man.
Mr. Mayor, I had a conversation with Mr. Gimple, um, on the telephone, and I believe you were there, at least on speaker, you could hear it. And, um, and I apologized on behalf of the city for the dissemination of this information. Uh, there's been nobody that's come forward that said, hey, I did this, or what are the cases? So we do not have any evidence of who would have done it, and I'm not sure that we're gonna go through the process of accusing twenty-nine firefighters of, of doing this. What we did determine is that there was not private information disseminated in this. Um, and that, um, you know, and so the, the risk of private information going out didn't happen, although it could happen in the future, hence the reason why we're changing the policy.
Yeah.
Or drilling down on the policy. I know there's a misuse of electronics, you know, and prior policies, but this drills down specifically on this. Act of nine-one-one, as I understand from the fire chief, may not be, uh, continued, because they use, um, I'm drawing from memory, the one that, uh, that is not available to the public now, almost exclusively. So-
Do you know what that is, Jim?
It's, uh, First Due.
I don't, I don't. First, first what?
First Due is the system that the Fire Protection Council decided they were gonna go to, and, um, and they've implemented that for all the agencies in Anoka County. So that in and of itself may have rectified this issue ever happening again, because no one outside of first responders gets access to that. So that being said, I, again, I'm not sure, Ms. Gimple, if you want us to apologize again, if that would help, um, but I, I'm not sure that we haven't come to the end of the road on this discussion.
Okay, I wasn't on the phone, just so you know, but-
I heard you speaking in the background, but that's okay. It's no different for me, so.
Okay, what I think, though, is, okay, if I, I'm almost positive you have those two mixed up. I believe First Due is public. I believe Act of nine-one-one is not a public app. You cannot get it without a code, and you can't, a pu- public can't get Act of nine-one-one. If I, if I can prove that to you, that that is, I don't know who told you that, or who is giving you that information.
There are, there are three. There's First Due, Pulse Point, and Act of nine-one-one.
Okay, but I'm speaking only of Act of nine-one-one, just because that one was one posted.
I understand.
If, if that, if I can prove to you that that was a private, that it's private, and no one from the public can get it, and I, I get it, so are you saying that you did an investigation, or there, you don't wanna accuse firefighters of, of that? Because that one is not public. There is not one person in the public that can-
I just received a note from Chief Sano that First Due is not the public one.
Okay, neither is Act of nine-one-one.
Well.
I guess we'll-
Is there any way to go back to whoever dispatched and find out who called it in?
The, the only way, um, Mr. Mayor and council members that this can be determined would be, a court order of some sort to try and determine that. And that would be your option as well. If you decide you want to pursue this in court and, and subpoena twenty-nine firefighters and, and that sort of thing, I'm just not sure that that's good use of public dollars, seeing as it wasn't a dissemination of private information. So, um, again, I, I, I don't know that this hasn't come to the end of the road, but you would probably disagree with me.
Well, how did, wasn't Gratitude Farms named in the app or on, online?
That was the caller.
Was Gratitude Farms?
Mayor, council members, so forth, this, this is a public forum where a resident basically is the one that provides, um, their particular viewpoint and so forth. It generally is not a forum for huge kind of a Q and A and discussion into a subject matter. What we've had here is, is, is there was a resident complaint. And then the recipients of the complaint, in this case, the governmental body, has reasonable discretion within a range about how to essentially take that information and then process it, in this case, investigate, and then make some decisions. Those decisions may not align with necessarily the purposes or the goals or objectives of the resident, but that, that happens. And it happens all the time. One particular individual viewpoint is gonna differ from another, and especially when we have an organizational. So what we've hear, heard from the City Administrator is a response to that complaint, response that is reasonable and trying to essentially approve the operations of the business. And I think this particular issue has been fully fleshed out in the, within the context and the scope of a public forum, and I would just urge everyone to move on.
I can appreciate that. I can. Um, and that's what I guess I was looking for. I didn't get, I didn't get anything. With Jack, I always got something, not to compare you to Jack, but I always got an email back saying, we did this, this, it's, you know, it's done, and I know I'm not, the person's not always going to like what they hear, and I'm okay with that, but I got nothing. I just got, I got nothing. And I, I know what you said, but I didn't get anything saying that we concluded it.
Okay, well, can we, can we wrap it up, per Mr. Larson's remarks, because it's been-
Yep, we're done. I'm done. That was it. I was looking for a response, and I, I got it, so thank you.
Are we, are we done with this particular topic?
I'm not gonna be back here for that.
Not for that?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, that closes the public agenda, or public forum, excuse me. That next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion's made. Do we have a second?
If somebody wants to pull I and D.
Um, I'd like to add G and H.
You wanna, you wanna second the motion, then we can go into discussion and do our polling, or what?
Well, don't we have to put it on the agenda first? I mean, how can you vote on somebody on the agenda?
So, uh, Mayor, council members, there's two ways to do this, but I think the best way is to go ahead and move in second, and then those individuals that wanna add to the consent agenda can, can do so. And, and then we will deal with the adding first, and then we'll deal with the subtraction second, okay?
Okay, second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second, and we'll say discussion.
You wanted to add?
You wanted to add something?
Yeah, I wanna add G.
You wanna add item G. What is item G?
We, to table the fire department relief funding pending more information.
That's, that would actually be covered under D.
That's D.
Yeah, we just have to pull item D.
Yeah, we'll just table it, yeah.
And table at that point.
Um, and H, well, H, I guess, we haven't decided on the security, so don't add it.
Yeah, no, we're not, yeah, we're not ready to do that. We, we need a pro write-up from Nate.
Mr. Mayor, we'll bring that on the ninth, um, the next council meeting and firm up those numbers and get a concise deal, so.
Right.
Well, I'll pull I, item D then. D isn't dog.
Item D is pulled.
And he wants to pull A, Mr. Mayor.
Who's pulling A, Jim? Okay, do you want to, uh, can we have a vote on the consent agenda? Net of item A and item D, which have been pulled? All in favor of approving it? It's already moved and seconded, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. That means the consent agenda as edited is approved. So, item A, approved bill list, Mr. Smith.
Matt, I got a question on the arena operations. I'm just curious, is there a way that we can get something from maybe Mike, uh, showing us when we started doing that? The reason I'm questioning that is because I'm seeing there's a lot of different numbers since we approved the city taking care of the arena. So is there something that, that he can provide, showing us that, you know, that we're close, but we're not over what we were? Like what Gibson-
Are you, are you describing, like, what the expenses might look like for the projected twenty twenty-five as opposed to first half of twenty twenty-four or something?
Mr. Mayor, that, that is a report that is generated, and I've seen it recently, so I can forward that to the council.
And, and we would expect them not to look alike, because we were paying a company, Gibson, to manage a facility, so, you know, a lot of those costs were taken care of by them out of their, the money we paid them, ten thousand a month or thereabouts, yeah. Was it ninety, ninety-five hundred or something a month?
Mr. Mayor, what I, what I will say is that the majority of the income for the ice arena comes in during hockey season, ice time. So, but the arena operates all year long, so coming up to the ice season, you're running a deficit, right? Until you're selling, you know, every hour of ice, and then at the end of the year, you come out ahead. So right now, the report, why I'm just drawing from memory, is might be, um, sixty thousand dollar deficit or something like that, but, but don't be alarmed. That's, uh, that's to be expected.
Yeah, that's what I wanna know, just to keep an eye on it. Because like Gibson never broke down nothing, so I'm thinking-
No.
This is the breakdown of a lot of different things.
Here, we can show you the report right here. So, this is through the end of October.
Starting when?
Uh, first of the year, so it's, it's not broken down by when since we started, but. So this, this report's generated, generated each month. Sixty-seven thousand. Our revenue's year-to-date, that ninety-six, like you said, we haven't got into the, into the hockey season yet, so this is when this one really gets rolling. And then our expenditure is year-to-date, and what we have budgeted. Scroll down just a, yeah, there you go.
So we're still under what's, what we budgeted?
Correct, yep. And we're selling, I can tell you, we just sold a whole bunch of ice time to Andover, which has never happened in the past. They bought a bunch for this upcoming weekend.
Very nice.
We're selling ice to people we've never sold to before, so I, I think this first year, we're gonna have a little bit of more upfront cost that we had to get things up and running. We had to get the security fixed. We had to do some building improvements. Um, we've sold more ad revenue this year than we have in the past, so all that's gonna help over time. I think next year will be an even better gauge of it, but we're doing pretty good so far.
Sounds like it was a good, good move to get Gibson out and get-
Right. Everything we've heard from the hockey community is it's been great, it's been great so far, so. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanna give a shout-out to Jay as well. I think he's, um, a lot of vested interests there, and, um, and he's, I, lack of a better word, hitting it out of the park, I think, so.
That's great.
Good.
Thank you, Nate, and thanks to Jay.
Thanks. I'll make a motion to approve item A.
Motion's made to approve item A of our consent agenda.
Second.
Multiple seconds. Any further, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion carries, or however you prefer it. Okay, the other item pulled was by Mr. Mundell. That was item D.
I'll make a motion to table item D until, uh, the ninth, meeting on the ninth, December ninth.
Second that.
Motion made by Mr. Mundell to table item D of the consent agenda. Seconded by Mr. Miller. That's the resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-six, Fire Department Benefit Level Increase. We're tabling it until December ninth, meeting of the City Council. Did I say that correctly? Okay, all in favor, or any further discussion of the issue? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we have nothing under new business, nothing on, or, uh, under departmental reports, under public works. We have a twenty twenty-five equipment capital improvement plan, and that's definitely Mr. Nate.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members. Um, I'm here tonight to talk about making some changes to our capital improvement plan, um, for twenty twenty-five. The city of East Bethel currently has two Ford F-four-fifties. These are medium-duty, uh, diesel-engine kind of dump-body trucks that we use for plowing cul-de-sacs, parking lots, and a lot of, uh, they're kind of our workhorses for the summer months for pulling Bobcat and mowers and things like that. These two particular trucks have been plagued with issues because of the diesel engine and the emissions requirements that go along with that. Over the last two years, one of them has been at the dealership for nine months. We've, we've had, uh, the last two summers, one of the vehicles wasn't, uh, available to us for the entire summer for the last two summers, so kind of at our heart of our season, we need these vehicles, they haven't been there. The, the, kind of the crux of the issue is they're designed with some pretty sophisticated systems for dealing with diesel emissions, and for our purposes, um, we don't use them hard enough to justify having a diesel engine, I think, is, with these new diesel engines, I guess. Most of our trips are local trips within the city, under six, eight miles to get from one side of the city to the other. We don't get the vehicles up to highway speeds where they have a chance to, uh, reach the point where they can burn off the particulates that are in the, uh, in the engine. So what we're proposing is to, um, move these vehicles up in our timeline and, and, and sell them. We think, uh, there's a pretty good market out there for, for contractors. They're able to take these vehicles and remove all these emissions things that we're unable to do right now. We've kind of been watching on mid-bid, they've been selling for pretty good prices, uh, somewhere in the thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars. So we can recoup fifty percent of the initial cost. Um, that's a lot more than we originally planned when we set up this equipment replacement schedule. And what we would propose doing in, in, in place of that would be to move a single-axle snowplow that we have planned for twenty twenty-five, moving that back a year. I think that's a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar, uh, snowplow that we have in the budget. I have the, uh, existing, um, equipment replacement schedule as attachment one, and the proposed, um, one is attachment two in your, in your packet. So we'd move one truck down a year and then move these two, um, F-four-fifties up until twenty twenty-five, and replace them, one with a gas engine, ta, uh, with a contractor dump box, would be similar. Uh, be able to do the similar duties as these diesel engines, haul stuff, uh, plow snow. And the other one, we would not put that contractor box on and just do a crew cab. Um, F, it'd be a thirty-five-hundred Chevrolet. They were the, the best prices on the state bid. So, and over the next three years, we'll save the city roughly forty-five thousand dollars, um, by not going with diesel engines and getting rid of one of these contractor boxes, as well as any costs we're gonna have for work on these diesel engines. The one that we spent all the money on, the other one hasn't had these repairs yet, but talking with the Ford engineers, it sounds like they're, they're gonna probably come up on the, on this other one as well, so we're kind of thinking, let's just get rid of it now before, before we have to deal with it. It was a total of eighteen thousand dollars. We went round and round with Ford. The actual manufacturer got involved, which takes a lot to get to that point. Tim, our mechanic, has spent hours on the phone dealing with both the dealership and the manufacturer. They were able to kick in eight thousand dollars for the one truck. They covered that. We ended up paying ten thousand out of, for the city to get this truck up and running. Right now, they're both working, but it could be any time now that same issues come up.
This North Country GM, um, you were saying you were gonna go to gas, but they've got diesel engines listed here, six-point-six-liter diesel?
That one is a, uh, six-point-six-liter, that's the gas engine, isn't it?
No, it's a Duramax turbo diesel.
Well, maybe that's the wrong, you put, it's, that's the gas engine quote price.
It's on page twenty-nine of the packet.
Where do you see that on there?
Eight thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and twenty cents. It's under quotation, North Country GM, two-twenty-five Chevy Silverado, thirty-five-hundred, four-by-four. Forty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-six.
Yep, and then if you go down to added options, six-point-six-liter V-eight standard.
So it'd be eighty-seven hundred dollars if you wanted the Duramax.
Yeah, that's the cost. So that would be the price if you wanted to upgrade that. So that's not checked off. It's kind of confusing how they do it. It's a big, long check. You can go through and pick which options you want. The far right column is what's actually included. So this, this price is for the six-point-six-liter V-eight.
Just checking.
Yeah, yep. So that's the cost. It'd be eight thousand, seven hundred if we wanted to go up, just up front for a diesel. So we're saving that on that particular truck there. On the Ford, it's about ten thousand dollars more to go to a diesel engine.
Now, Nate, your, uh, discussion you presented here was very clear and very thorough, like it always is. it always is, so...
Yeah, I, we really feel this is a better benefit for the city in saving money, as well as less downtime, and it serves kind of our needs, and it doesn't affect any of the budgeting, this money's already been put aside into this equipment replacement fund, and like I said, I think we'll get quite a bit of money on the resale of these trucks, too.
And you answered the question I had written down, is it a Ford thing, or is it a D E L thing, or is it whatever, and you answered it, it was, they're not operated at the operating temperature that they're supposed to.
That's the biggest issue.
It's really what it is, and I would not, never thought of that.
No, we need is a bigger Public Works building to keep our new equipment inside, make it so the guys can drive in and out without... Have you been over there, Matt?
It's pretty tight in there, it's on our, we've been talking about that for a decade now, but that'll come up with when we do a building assessment. So included in that is a resolution to declare these two surplus property, it's about ninety days out for the crew cab, so all these would take place in 2025, the actual purchase. And the one with the contractor box would be an additional, probably sixty days after that, so it'd be into the springtime when that one would be available, but, so we'd still have to use these two diesel engines for, these two diesel F-450s for another, most of this plow season, so there might be some more costs involved with repairs by the time we get replaced, but...
So we've got a Resolution 2024-77 in front of us, Resolution Designating Surplus Equipment. I assume you're looking for an approval of that?
Yeah, we'd like a recommendation to make the changes to the equipment replacement schedule that will be included in the 2025 budget, and then Resolution 2024-77 and 2024-78 declaring surplus property, and then authorization to purchase the other vehicles on state contract.
You looking for a separate resolution then for that coach tire changer, or is that, you're going to put that in with the trucks, or...
That was on the consent, no, that was just to, that was already a different resolution, yep.
So, first resolution, I'll make a resolution to make the proposed changes to 2025 through 2029 Equipment Replacement Schedule.
So are you at 2024-77, are you up above that?
I'm, I'm up above that. If you look on page twenty-three of the packet.
So first thing we want to do is approve changes to the replacement schedule?
Yes.
Okay.
Twenty-two-four dash seventy-seven.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Yeah. Page twenty-six.
Yeah, that's, that's declaring surplus property.
Then, after that... Do you, do you need us to do anything regarding that replacement schedule? Or you're just informing us?
Just a council recommendation, because this will be included in the budget for 2025, then we'll, we'll swap this out and put it in. It doesn't change any of the numbers, but it's just for a reference.
But what do you need us to do right now?
Recommendation, accepting the proposed changes to the equipment replacement schedule.
Which is the motion I just made.
Correct.
Okay, so we've got Brian's motion. Do we have a second? Bob Duroch seconds. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard, motion passes. So we are recommending the changes in the equipment replacement schedule.
Yep.
And then you're going on to Resolution 2024-77, which is designating one of the trucks surplus equipment, and you've got another resolution to designate the other truck. Okay.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I'll move twenty, twenty-four dash seventy-seven declaring 2015 F-450 surplus property.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Duroch and seconded by Mr. Mundell to approve Resolution 2024-77. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Why do you take this one?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve 2024-78 Declaring Surplus Property.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll give it to Tim. Second made by Mr. Miller.
Pretty quiet.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, or the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard, the motion carries.
So, need one more motion? Make a motion to authorize the purchase of Chevrolet thirty-five-hundred crew cab, Chevrolet thirty-five-hundred cabin chassis, contractor box, and snowplows from the quoted state of Minnesota contract pricing.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion of this matter? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard, motion carries.
I move for the repair costs for the 2015 F-450, and the repair costs for the 2016 F-450.
Do we need those, Nate?
No, that was kind of just a summary, so you guys could see what we've spent on that so far, so we don't, we probably don't need nothing on that.
I retract it.
Don't need anything on it.
So are you complete?
We're good to go, thank you.
You're good to go. Thank you very much for a very clear presentation of the facts. We always appreciate that. That completes department reports, so we're down to staff reports.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just wanted to report that the county canvassing board was held today, and you'll recall that ASIT had been working pretty hard to try and increase the number of precincts that would be randomly selected and, and hand-counted. They did increase it from six to eight precincts, so they will be doing a larger number than they did last time.
Statistically, that's good.
It's, it's better. And we received an email today that East Bethel was again selected for the post-election review, which will be held on Monday, the eighteenth. So I believe that is three years in a row now.
What are the odds of that?
The lightning strikes.
Thanks, Nate.
And, and so, that does present a little bit of work for Kerry and for our election judges, and, and so just when she thought she was wrapping that up, she gets kicked when she's down, but at any rate...
That's pretty dramatic.
Well, I'll tell you what, she's, she's been working very hard.
Yeah, I know.
You know, the increased hours that the state has imposed on cities for, for being open during, for early voting and that.
Would be nice if they funded their propositions.
Yeah, it was an unfunded mandate, certainly, and, and our staff has really been put under duress, you might say, to, to meet those hours, and they did, and, and it was fatiguing. And so, coming off the elections, we, we now get to do some more here, but at any rate, the, the, the good news, of course, is that, you know, we can be ground zero in terms of are these machines accurate? And, and I will make the prediction, as I have in the past, that, that if there's any sort of discrepancies, generally it's found in the hand counting, not the machines. And so it's, but this is, this is a unique situation that we have here in Minnesota. We, as you know, we fill out a ballot, and we feed that ballot into the machine, and the ballot is stored. And it's not an electronic version, like electronic poll tabs or something like that, where you don't know what's going on, there's actually a physical ballot in there that can be counted in a post-election review such as this, so...
Did that flash drive have anything to do with it?
No, I don't believe so, no.
Triggered it? Okay.
No. But at any rate, yeah, it's, it's been an interesting election cycle, no doubt.
Oh, yeah.
And, and so we, we will be able to see what the results of these come out to be on the eighteenth at least, so hopefully it doesn't drag on too much longer.
Any idea yet what time of day that is?
I do not have the time of day.
I'd like to attend.
Okay.
Yeah, that might be interesting.
I'll let Kerry know and have her send out a, you know, if, you know, I'm assuming it's open to the public, so...
You're the only staff person left here, so is that it for the staff reports?
That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, in the interest of being thorough, do we have any council reports?
I got two items. We had Sunrise River WMO meeting, biggest thing that we talked about. We have a pool of money for shoreline stabilization projects between Martin Lake and Coon Lake, and so we discussed project ranking and what metrics should be used to decide which projects to be executed. So that was the biggest thing there, but it sounds like we might get a, a lot of projects done with this pool of money. So on the second thing that I got is, we're all here on a Wednesday instead of a Monday, and that's, so it was Veterans Day, so I just want to thank all the veterans.
There's one right there.
So, thank you, veterans, and that's all I have.
Anybody else?
Well, we had our Rum River Bylaws Meeting last night.
Oh.
Those are, those are pretty much all the time.
Is that available on YouTube?
I hope not.
No?
But we did get a new joint powers agreement for all the cities involved there, and it's something new, and it's something that's, that's fair, and it's going to work well into the future for all the cities involved, so that was a good outcome.
So we're not at loggerheads with Ham Lake anymore?
Nope.
Good. Better to not...
So is Water, do they control the shoreline stuff?
Control the shoreline stuff, as...
Modifying it?
No, I think that would be another organization that you'd have to go through for modifying it, but they, what they...
I just know people that are.
And what, what they do is they get grants and funding sources to go out and find projects that, that need help, and then it's, it's like a seventy, thirty, or eighty, twenty match that the, the property owner has to contribute to get some of this work done. So where the Sunrise River is contributing, the eighty, and the property owner contributes the twenty.
So they're going to come out and get the muck from, from the shoreline.
And then, and then the Sunrise River actually does the, the project.
Oh. Handy.
So...
Well, I, well, I, all I can say is, you know, thanks to the vets, I call them brothers and sisters, if anybody's served, that's what you are. Some people, being a veteran, that's your family. Some people don't really have much of a family, and once you're, once you're a veteran, you're always a veteran. And, you know, it's unfortunate, the amount of suicides that go on, so if you know somebody... Veterans Day is kind of tough on a lot of people, brings, brings back a lot of memories, and so some people don't want to be with anybody, some people want to be alone, I'll just check in on them. A lot of homeless vets.
Anything else, folks?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Duroch moves that we adjourn, Mr. Mundell seconded, any discussion of that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No one's opposed.
Imagine that.